That is. See in a few minutes. Are you ready, Tyce?
All right.
All right, good evening. Please call the Centertown City Council meeting order for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. When everyone attends, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the republic our wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our. Please remain standing. Josie Reed, lead us in prayer.
Sure. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the opportunity to, for us as elected officials to represent the citizens of this city. Lord, we ask that you would give us discernment, wisdom, understanding, and knowledge, and put any of our self-interests aside. That we would just do your will, Lord Jesus, as you have willed for this city, so shall it be. We thank you for every city employee, everyone that works for the city, has contact with the city. We ask that you bless them, protect them, as they go about our city's business, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, sir.
Will Thompson. Justin McAlver is absent. Wendy Henson.
Here.
Chelsea Reed.
Here.
Joshua Hagan.
Here.
Cody Miles.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Edwards.
I'm here. All right, so first on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from August twenty sixth and September ninth, twenty twenty five. They've been in your Dropbox, and there's been no changes. Someone like make motion adopt those minutes?
So moved.
Motion, we have second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
You want to oppose? All right, next is acknowledgement receipt of the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from August nineteenth, and also the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September second and September twenty third. I'm gonna make motion acknowledge those.
Make motion.
Have a motion, we have second?
Second.
And all in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, next is our financial report. So right now, we are seventy-five percent through the year. And revenue wise, we're just a little bit over that, eighty-two percent. Almost eighty-three, and expenditures were almost seventy-three percent. Still got a few things outstanding, so that'll, that'll close that gap a little bit. Just a couple noteworthy things here, you know, city sales tax continues to be ahead just a hair, and county sales tax is basically right where we budget it. And then also, building permits is still doing real good pretty years so far. And then on the street fund, let me get that. Got to be a better way to do this. All right. Okay, street fund, we got ninety-seven percent of the revenue, and expenditure wise, we're fifty-seven percent, but we still have some outstanding bills for some paving and different things, so. That'll do. I mean, so if anybody got any questions on the financial report? All right, if not, would somebody can make a motion to accept the financial report, and also the court report that's attached?
Removed.
And a motion from Cliff, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Wendy or Josie? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, next, we'll go to department reports, and I want to call Cody Harper up. Make trouble, come on here. So. So Cody, I remember hiring Cody back when I was in your position, back in two thousand and five, so this is his twentieth year with the city. So I want to give him a twenty-year service award.
Welcome. Thanks, sir.
We got a duty to speak, you want to say a few?
Anything at all, so thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody.
Cheers to twenty more.
So cheers to twenty more.
Yeah.
Want any more?
Yeah, so yeah.
All right.
Any more, easy, yeah.
All right, so next, this department reports, they're in here, anybody got any questions on any of it? All right, next is public comment. So this is the time, if anybody wants to address the council, here's your time, we do limit it to three minutes. And if you do want to address the council, please come up and say your name, address, and. If you want, and if you don't, that's okay. So I'm gonna open up a public comment at this time. Go once. Twice. All gone, all right, public comments closed. So we'll get into ordinances and resolutions. After I get through all this. So before we start, would someone like to make a motion? Read all ordinances and resolutions by title only, and also suspend a rule requiring the reading of the ordinances on three separate occasions.
Removed.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, so this first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, and this actually come out of the public comment of our last meeting, when we were talking about cable franchises. And, you know, the state has actually taken this over since two thousand and thirteen. This was put into code in two thousand and nine, the city council then renewed the current franchise agreement that was in place about two thousand and nine, but then the state's taken over two thousand and thirteen, so we no longer control it. So in an effort to clean our codebook up, this is just taking it out of the codebook, repealing that section of the code. The emergency clause that was in there, it was just a standard emergency clause. I did, I think I addressed that in the email, you all seen, but it is a standard emergency clause. There really was no emergency because Cox Cable's been here long before I moved here. And I mean, now we have several different choices, but, you know, some areas do, so. But this is just getting it out. Any questions?
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash five-one, and ordinance repealing Title Four, Section Two-Four of the Centerton Municipal Code.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one.
Make motion.
We have a motion by Josh, should we have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, this next ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two. This is the impact fee ordinance that we passed several months ago, which is in effect. However, we failed to put it into code. Some cities have it in the code, some don't, but it was recommended that we do stick it in our codified code. So this is just adding chapter two, Title Sixteen. When I first sent it to you, it was going in Title Eleven, and I sent amended agenda out earlier today. But we're moving it to Title Sixteen, that's where we have grading permits and things too, so. This is just added to, add a new chapter to Title Sixteen, making it chapter sixteen sixteen. Any questions? Thanks, and everything else is exactly the same. Well, I mean.
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash five-two, an ordinance adding chapter sixteen point one-six, impact fees to Title Sixteen drainage regulations of the City of Centerton Municipal Code.
Someone like make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two.
So moved.
We have a motion by Wendy, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, so this next resolution, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven. This is authorizing Benton County, the Benton County Collector, to collect the county or the property tax and distribute it to the cities and the schools and everything. So this is just the same ordinance we do every, or resolution we do every single year. And they have, we have to do it each year. So this is just a continuation of that. Any questions?
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash three-seven, a resolution authorizing the rate of property tax for the City of Centerton for the year two thousand and twenty-five to be collected in two thousand and twenty-six.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Removed.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
I started to talk this because nobody.
First.
Pick, pick, take your pick.
Don't remember anything about me.
Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, next is authorizing Larry Heron to continue mowing the Centertown Cemetery. Let me give you a little back history on this. So the city took this cemetery over from a board back in two thousand and fourteen. You know, the board came to the city council back at the time, and they were concerned about losing members of the board. They were, you know, losing members, they were passing away and things, and they asked the city to take it over. Mr. Heron, when he, he was mowing the cemetery for them for many years. They also gave us the money in their trust, so the city received fifty thousand dollars, or some fifty-some thousand dollars, I don't have the exact amount. But they receive it, we put it in a fund you'll see on the back page here called the Cemetery Trust Fund. So this is how Larry gets paid. He'd been working, or he'd been doing this for the city for eleven years. However, when Otta was here, and Shannon, if she has anything to add, she can, but when Otta was here, we, we had to, to set a rate for him, they wanted the council to set a rate, so we currently pay him two hundred and thirty dollars, and that's the rate we would like to continue to set. And I will say, this man and his brother, they get out there, and they're there two or three days when they do this. Because they have to mow it, then they weed eat it around every single headstone, so. You know, because I had somebody ask, well, why don't our own people do it, but this, this is more cost effective, plus this is not taxpayers' money doing this, so. I mean, when, and we have enough money in there to probably cover this for another seven or eight years. So we just like continue on with Larry at a rate of two hundred and thirty dollars an hour, I mean, two hundred and thirty dollars a time. So, not an hour, each time. That's the only expense we have on that cemetery, yes. Now, we have, sometimes we have trees and things that come down, and Public Works takes care of that. You know, we get some, then choose a bit of drainage ditch in the back with a bunch of trees. Anthony's crew will, or Anthony or Josh's crew will go out there and they'll take care of those, we don't get too much of that.
I think they maintained it recently, looks really good.
Yeah. And then me and Larry, we just coordinate when to mow it, so. So he mows about ten, twelve times a year. So, any questions? Someone like to make motion to authorize Larry to continue doing this at two hundred and thirty dollars each time he does it?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
You want to oppose? All right, next, I got Jocelyn here. We have two policies that we tabled at the last council meeting, and we added a new one, the Act of Allowance Policy, I ask everybody to read them. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, Jocelyn did a very good job of highlighting the changes to them. But Jocelyn's here, if you have any questions on those, and we approved all the other ones last month, so. These are just carryover. Any questions? Someone like to make a motion to accept the three policies as presented?
Does this include the timekeeping?
Yes, it's in there.
I'm just curious, why we don't spell out who the exempt employees are? Or is it in another section?
It's defined in the book.
Okay.
And part of the book, and we'll bring the book to them, right? Once, may I?
We, we can, yeah, just, just to give them the final version.
To you, where is the fine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll provide the final version, we'll put all these in there, and I don't think we have to, because it's, all this is what's already adopted.
I just wanted to make sure that it was somewhere within the.
And actually, the, the current employee manual is in, in Dropbox. There's a deal there, says training resources, and the current one's there, but then I'll change it out after we're done. So. But good question. All right, any more questions? All right, someone like to make a motion to adopt these as presented?
Got a motion.
Oh.
Josie, it was a motion.
Josie, second. Second, back to this.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, next is authorization, so we're going into the two thousand and twenty-six budget. And we, Public Works has identified that they wanted to add four new F-250 trucks, we've been leasing through Enterprise. Here at City Hall, we want to replace two cars. Well, we want to replace one, and, and we're gonna keep one, so we're gonna replace our Equinox we have here.
It's good.
Yeah, it's getting high up in mileage. We want to get another one, so we want to get two Ford Explorers, because we, we use these, but so is others. You know, the fire department uses our vehicles for training, we use them. And then we have one Versa, which we're gonna move up to the street department. When these cars come in there, because they have Samantha and also Melinda. And then we're gonna keep the other Versa here just for the custodian, because she goes back and forth to the building, so. So really, this is just asked to go ahead and order these, and, and they are accounted for in the new budget, which you'll see in two weeks, but they recommend we order these now, because it takes three to four months to get them, and October's the time they'd like to order. Any questions? I'm hearing, all right, someone like to make motion to authorize us to go ahead and lease these four F-250 trucks for Public Works, and the two Ford Explorers here for.
I'll make motion.
You got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone oppose? All right, Water and Sewer update, if anyone of you guys want to come up and talk to us.
Does, does that mean you win, Don, if you get to make the presentation? Is TJ win?
Oh, TJ. I think Bob wins tonight.
Can I, can I say something real quick? I want, I just want to thank you, and I want to thank TJ for being here tonight.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. I'm glad you said that before.
I'm thankful regardless, Don.
Yes, yes.
I, I don't know what update you guys are looking for, I mean.
I think they're looking for an update maybe on the pinch points.
Yeah, the pinch points wrote down.
I think it's, that was the main one.
Other recordings all out there.
Recordings, we have minutes on the website up through August. And September's not on there yet, because we haven't approved them yet, we'll do that at our meeting Tuesday. It's my understanding that Malcolm was supposed to be looking into other recordings, either voice or, and/or video or just voice. And he was looking for a speaker system or a microphone system to pick up better than the one we have. At the last meeting, he told me that he expected to have some information on that at this, this coming meeting. Something that we could get. Pinch points. No other update, past what we've given you the last couple of meetings. You know, we've got an ongoing study going with flow monitoring. And that's pretty much what it depends on. I mean, if, if our data shows that, that our flow is at forty percent of max, you know, then, then there's no. We've got a process in place to collect data to show the state that it's forty percent of what they're saying. We should calculate it all, and if we can do that, then that would save us millions of dollars.
Either of you guys know if, if we took up the offer from Sand Creek to, to share some information?
They shared it.
Did they?
They shared it with them, yes. They, they did, because they included me in the email, and Malcolm acknowledged getting it. Like, or Jeff, their engineer, your engineer, not their engineer.
I'm not sure what information we're talking about.
I think I might go, add just a little color. I mean, in regards to the pinch points, right, again, at the last joint meeting that we had, all the conditions by ADEQ that were placed and ADH placed directly from them onto the utility have been addressed and taken care of, and again, that was the immediate solution, like, what can we get into compliance with? Any future development, that is still ongoing, and negotiations between the developers and the utility. And again, we're coming into the season where we're updating our ordinances and our policies, and that's gonna outline the path for developers to have to execute their own sanitary sewer study prior to preliminary platting approval. So that's, that's that standpoint, right? So as far as the state's concerned, pinch points are all taken care of, and, and we're good there, if that makes sense.
Because I, I think when I, when I was at the last meeting, I thought that you were gonna submit something within thirty days, which will be your next meeting. I think that's what Jeff said, they were, is that, am I correct?
That's, that's, that's a separate project, so.
But also.
Improved some of the sections of the pinch points. This stuff is part of our CIP master plan that ESI has been working on to get to Allen Road Lift Station. And that's just for general capacity improvements that have been on the books and are planned and submitted to ADH. So those are, I just want to highlight, those are separate items than the defined pinch points by ADH previously.
Have, have the pinch points brought up by the developers been addressed?
Ongoing conversations between developers and the utility, yeah.
And everything for Decatur's upgrade still on track for December?
Any changes?
I'm actually gonna give an update, I went to their Decatur meeting last night. Yeah, I was gonna give an update when you guys were done.
And our joint monthly meeting with the Gators this upcoming Thursday.
Okay.
Then what? That's when the utilities get the update, is that our standard monthly meeting?
Okay.
Where do you all meet up?
Decatur.
Okay.
We're curious on the pinch points. Everything ADH has asked for has been, been completed. Let's say, the developer wants to develop in the northern section of Centerton, maybe they're not in Centerton, but they get annexed in, so they can be. And there's undeveloped land that there's a pinch point on there. Is that?
That's the new ordinance that'll go into place where they do a sanitary sewer study, identify where the capacity issue's at, and then through the preliminary platting approval process, the beginnings of a development agreement will be negotiated. As far as who will be improving that, that section of utility.
Is the utility gonna be generally asking the developer to do all the improvements?
The improvements required to support the development, and then the utility through their master plan with RJN, which Don alluded to, will say, hey, there's additional growth, so instead of replacing this pipe six times, when six different developers come in, the first developer in, again, this will have to be voted on and approved, but this is the general framework, is if it's an eight-inch pipe today, and this, this development needs it to be a ten-inch pipe, but our master plan will say it needs to be a fifteen-inch pipe, they will install a fifteen-inch, and their development agreement will lay the rat of share between the utility and developer for the costs. That'll be the general framework, but again, that's gonna be voted on, discussed, I mean, that's not gonna be, that'll be a quarter one item that gets solidified.
That will address the developers' concerns about knowing that cost upfront.
You got it. Yes, sir. Correct.
And budget for that?
Yeah.
And is there any budget concerns from y'all soon?
Our budget meeting is next month, coming up. So we'll have an update on that after, after that point.
Okay, anything else for them? Okay, if you want to sit down, I'll give the update I have. Thank you. Hey, so also, I did write a letter to them, asked them to forego the rate increase coming up, they acknowledged receiving it, which you all got too, so. They acknowledge it, and they'll talk about it at some point, so. You know, I gave some information on pass ratios and things, that's all in your Dropbox, plus you all got it. So we won't hash out, let them discuss it since we, or I pass it on to them. Couple things about Decatur, I did go to their meeting last night, because I, I look at their agenda, I look at a lot of different people's agenda. And they had wastewater on the agenda, so I thought, oh, I'm gonna go see what that's all about. So Mayor Thorpe, and he's not here tonight, because we do have a meeting, or some kind of public hearing tonight, right now, with ADEQ in Little Rock, they're there right now, you know, just showing support for the, you know, the permit, because they have to go through this to get the, the upgraded capacity permit. You know, and I think that's one of the final legs of it, so they're having, you know, they have to have a public hearing for, so that's where him and James Boston, their directors there, so they're there right now. And I did ask Mayor Thorpe to give me an update, and if he does, I'll email you all, and I'll include you too, is to see what they found out, but as far as the plant goes, he was actually kind of excited about it. So the headworks, which, you know, brings all the wee, we're crap, brings all the stuff in. That, you know, yeah, it, it could take in like twenty-four million gallons, you know, a day, no, no problem. They've got most of that work done, they're doing some last minute cementing and stuff. There's also membranes they had to replace, they're replacing three of them, two of the new ones are in, and they hope to have the third one in hopefully in the next two, three weeks was their goal is. They got all hands on board over there, they got the street guys over there working, they're working, they got some out-of-town consultants here working with it to, you know, to help install this thing, sort of trying to get it up. They are also having to add some stuff for UV monitoring. Right now, the UV monitor have, will handle the four million gallons that they, they currently get, or three point eight. They will have to upgrade that, and I guess they're getting ready to order that pretty soon, to, to get that into place, so. So that's going on, but as far as this expansion, this is where he was excited. He did have a concept, you know, more of an engineered plan of what they're looking at next, this is not in concrete, he just wanted to show the council, here's what we're looking at. So he, you know, his site plan, they got plenty of room out there for this on, on their site, they, they got the land for it. But they show their current plant at a capacity of five point three six million gallons per day, that's where they're going to, or that's where they think they're going. But then they show these little pods, and each one of these little pods, they can add at least three more, each one will take an additional four million gallons. All the water will come, all the sewage will come through that headwork, so they'll have to update that, and then it'll be redirected to these pods, so. It looks like they'll bring it on if it, all the plants fit, and they get it all worked out, four million gallons at a time, so that should bring their plan up, they think the nineteen something at, at the end of the day. A million gallons per day, it, it is not happening overnight, they have to, you know, do this all in phases.
They were talking to go to six, and then what, twelve or fifteen?
Yeah. So, and I'm, and I'm, I'm sure Mayor Thorpe, he, he has been attending the, or, or the utility meeting, so hopefully he'll bring an update on that, because they were all excited, you know, the council's good to hear that. They had some conversations, you know, and they, they felt like things were going pretty good, so that was kind of refreshing to hear. You know, I just wanted to, you know, go over there and, so we'll see, and I'll, I'll keep watching their agenda, they keep, you know, putting on there, I, I will go over there. Because I think it's very important for us to, you know, know that and, and share that information. And if they have something in between times, and I, I will email you all if, if they have a meeting or something that need to pass on, but you know, I believe they only meet once a month, too, they meet the second Monday of every month. So, anyway, that, that was the highlights there, but it was good information, so.
That's a good update, thanks, thanks for going.
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to go, because it's very important, you know, because we want to keep moving, and we all, and, and everybody's frustrated, we just want to work together and keep this thing moving forward. Oh, one other thing they did add, which I was really proud to hear, is, you know, they talked about metering. So right now, you know, they acknowledge that we have a meter here, and they have a meter from Centerton inside your plant. Which, you know, there's a meter on each end, and they read pretty close, it might be a little variance, very, very little. But when they upgrade, you know, to these next phases, they're gonna have a meter from Simmons in there, because they don't have a meter from Simmons inside that plant. They have it at the plant, you know, but not inside. So they'll have a meter there, plus they're also gonna have a meter for their own stuff. So then they can look and say, okay, we took in four million gallons today. You know, they get that all up, and, and I think there's something called a SCADA system, I'm not sure what that is. Some kind of reporting system, I think they're in the process of trying to add in there, too. I don't think it's there yet, but I think it's some, so I guess any of our people can look, you know, Malcolm will go look, or you know, anybody can say, okay, hey, we got, this is what's flowing through the plant, so everybody can be on the same sheet of music, and you know, they also acknowledge the meetings that, that you're having, they're, you know, real, real excited, and they feel like they're very productive. Because they didn't acknowledge that, and they said, we are meeting, so. Yeah, I think I got everything. Tell you more on Water and Sewer.
Yeah, can I, just wanted to comment on the rates, I know, nobody wants to increase rates, but it seems like we're, we have the ball that's showing us that we're gonna have annual rate increases, and I think they're gonna be easier to absorb annually versus, you know, pa- passing that on is gonna be easier to swallow for the citizens than absorbing. Because that's gonna slow down our ability to build infrastructure and address some of these issues that we have. The development's gonna start coming as soon as this opens up, and I don't think we should handcuff the utility by asking, or you know, requesting that they absorb those increases, I think that we need to take those as they come, so that we don't end up at a point five years or six years from now where we're doubling the rate all at once. I think people can absorb that into their budget a little bit easier annually, and I think it should be passed on with a, you know, a reasonable margin. And I think it should be passed on with a, you know, a reasonable margin so that there's money available to make those upgrades to help us kind of get ahead of the curve because it seems like we're still behind the eight ball in some of these areas. And so I just, that's a concern I have. I just, I don't, I don't feel like we need to kick the can down the road. We need to just take our lumps as we get them. And and try to keep things moving in the right direction. Um, I feel if we absorb those rates, um, you know, that could cut into our leak remediation. And there will be funds to do a lot of that, and that's that's gonna save us a lot of money in the long run um, for that. So I think I think we just need to be really thoughtful about what this looks like moving forward. But that's just, that's my two cents.
I do understand they are doing a rate study. And uh, and I'm sure that'll be done before we even go to budget and that that'll be, you know, so then when the public comes and say, okay, here's what we got, here's the rate study to back that up. You know, and that's, I I just wanted to throw this out there for them to consider this. You know, because a lot of cities, you know, another large growing, another city growing just as fast as we are, they just use, just pass the thirty five cents on it. They don't add to it. And you know, the the ratio, I just threw it out there because, you know, they they got a good ratio. Uh, I know we're gonna have increases when sewer comes, they're gonna do a rate study on sewer. I know Bob Thorpe, you know, he they they have to, they have to do it by law. There's an Act six oh five for that too. So we're just trying to get a little bit of a break if we could, but the race study will will help a lot. I think that'll help everybody understand and we'll put, you know, when they give me the race study, I'll put it in there for you too. So and uh, the public can see all our documents online. I I posted all out there. So anyway. Cool. Anything else? All right, what else do I got? Oh, uh, other business, I got one thing I need to discuss. So as you know, we are working on a trail. Get this thing to move. All right, all right. So we're working on a trail on Allen Road. Uh, we're adding a ten foot trail to our existing trail. And we have seven properties there that we need uh, recreation easements from. We have a utility easement there now. And uh, these are not close to these fo- folks fence, they're, you know, a little ways off. And the city is wanting to put a ten foot uh, sidewalk. It's basically just a sidewalk uh, with some strip in it. There's a trail. Uh, and I already have two of the seven. I've I've talked to two of the property owners. Uh, three of these uh, are are out of state or two are out of state and then one uh one is has been hard to get a hold of. So I'm gonna make another attempt to get a hold, and I talked to a couple others and I'm still working with it. Uh, but there might be a possibility we might have to condemn these. Which, you know, for these easements, they'll still own the property, but we'll just have to condemn it for the sidewalk. Uh, I wanted to make sure the council didn't have any issue with that. I mean, we have to condemn easements all the time for utilities and different things. Uh, and what would happen if we condemn it is I had to have the properties appraised, which I already hired an appraiser. Uh, I do have funds from a grant I received to to pay for the the surveyor, plus if I have to pay for any of these easements, I have still funds left from that grant. Uh, and I'll, we'll negotiate in good faith, but if we have to condemn it, we can't find these folks. Uh, you know, so I'll have to solicit Brian to condemn it. I want to make sure the city didn't have any problem with that. Or if you had any more questions on condemnation, uh, you know, Brian can help answer those. But uh, you know, we've got to do this for, we put the stoplight in at Stephen Main and different things. We got, when we first started doing this, I was told we had all these, but we don't. But this plan's almost done. This is the only thing holding us up for putting it out for bid. And if we do condemn it, we do put a fair amount of money back. You know, I, these easements are not, they they won't be very high. But then we'll get an easement right away. We'll, you know, issue to us and then we can negotiate with property owners and and get it resolved because hopefully we can get a hold of them. So I I guess I just, anybody have any questions? I mean, Brian can answer that if there's.
So you said there was no reduction of their actual property?
No, there's, because there's a twenty five foot easement back there now.
Okay.
You know, it's a twenty five foot utility easement and they'll still keep this easement. It's still theirs.
Right.
They they don't put fences. They get the fences way up above them.
That's what I'm saying. Like, it's not gonna impact any of the current fencing. They're not losing usable.
And we'll maintain it.
Using currently.
We already maintained it. Our guys already maintained that that whole row back there. The whole twenty five foot, you know, I don't know, twenty five foot, but that whole strip. Our guys mow back there all the time when they do the the trail down there at the Kissing Park. So and uh that's, that's it. So any questions?
Does this plan go all the way to Town View?
Yeah, this is the only seven easements we need though.
You don't need the last four, it looks like on the map?
No, we, there there's seven here, one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, and then there's a break because the.
The rest, the rest of them we have.
Okay.
We're good. We, they they, because they're in right away, the rest of them.
Okay.
Yeah, and 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 half has already did all this, all this work. We got like a hundred thirteen gauge plan of this. So so I guess I need, okay, Brian, do you think I need an approval to go ahead and?
You know, I personally, I think i- i- if we pursue condemnation, I I I suspect that we don't want to have everything together before the next council meeting. So I would, I would wait and we make that.
Continue trying to contact. I'm gonna, the ones I couldn't contact, I'm gonna send certified mail to.
And I think you could give a better definition to the council on what they're approving.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem. I just want to, you know, let you know where we're at because you get multiple calls on this trail. So I get calls on it. I just want to kind of give an update. So, you know, I was gonna try to serve it out. I actually got a, one lady trying to contact the guy for me that knows him. So we'll, we'll get it worked out.
But that, that's my understanding is some of the difficulty right now is the state owners.
We're out of state, one, one is not responding.
Right.
So we're doing this because they're not responding essentially.
Yes.
Because they're the kind of the missing piece in the.
And I got two already and I'm gonna go file those tomorrow when I give them that uh, resolution. So and I'm gonna continue. I've got two others I'm still talking to, so might only need three to do. But I am getting appraisals because if I have to offer them anything, I'll know what to offer. You know, I'll get a fair, and I don't, I don't think it's a whole lot. So.
So they'll receive something regardless?
Well, I'm asking for donations. The the two donated, I'm I'm actually asking, but if they don't want to donate, we can negotiate. I just need to have something.
And that's something we we have to know prior to to condemning.
Yes.
Is we have to have, we have to have a, the value of what it is because.
I'm getting all that.
That value in the registry of the court.
Yeah, no, I had to go that when we did, I had to go down and give them the check. So checks, because there was like nine of those. So, all right, so I'll just leave it as an update for now. All right, we have any other business? All right, so Coffee with the Mayor is uh, this Saturday.
What's that past meeting?
At nine AM at the old uh, L City Hall. Everybody's welcome.
Main Street Hall.
Yep. Our budget workshop will be a few weeks from today. On the, on the budget workshop, we we are gonna have uh, fajitas for dinner.
Fajitas?
Fajitas.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have, and we'll have it here as early as five thirty. We'll be right in here. I'll put tables up. But uh, we'll have it at five thirty. We'd like to start at six. Uh, I will be sending the budget to you this week, probably today or tomorrow, with an explanation of everything we're doing in all the departments. Because, you know, we we got raises in there, we got some uh, animal shelter upgrades we want to do, we got some people we want to add. I I think we got it all worked out. We're, our departments all sat together, we all worked through it. Uh, we made it all work, uh, and and we're, it looks like we're gonna be in good shape and uh, but I, but I'll I'll explain department by department. And that should make it quicker. Then when we get in here, we'll just have like a round table. I'll go to the first department. All right, you know, let the council know your highlights and council has any questions. Uh, you know, please ask them at that time. You know, if we do any adjusting in the budget, we'll have to do it within that same budget. Because like I said, we we stretched it out good and, you know, it it, I think it's gonna be, it looks very good. It came out better. I I was a little concerned with it, you know, but I think it's gonna be just fine. And like I said, we add people, we're gonna AC and the shit, we're working.
Is animal shelter getting an air conditioner?
So there's two phases.
Okay.
No, there's two phases. First, we gotta upfit it. That's in this budget.
Okay.
One coming up. And then after the outfit is done, that, which is the more expensive of the whole thing. Then we'll come back and we'll get a quote on the AC. If we can squeeze it out next year's budget, great. If not, we'll put it in the following budget. We're working toward that goal. The front's all done. It's all remodeled. We want to get it in. There's, there's two parts. There's the old part and then, you know, we've got some.
The front's nice now. I was there last week.
Cody put a pretty good number in there, so maybe that'll cover that. Plus, plus maybe a little bit more toward the AC too. We'll just have to wait. He's working on getting some quotes and things now, just to, you know, but I'm gonna leave the number he has in there. He's, he's got a good number in. I I like it.
How are the donations managed that come from, from that situation? They just put in.
Put it in a donation account. I think it got about five thousand dollars.
Specifically for that or is it just kind of a general?
It'll go toward that.
Yes, uh, so Shannon's keeping it um, earmarked as far as donations coming in just for the AC. Uh, last total I had was three, about three thousand dollars um, if they're announced.
Been contributed far?
Yep.
And this is for the area where the uh, the kennels are, correct?
The full parts, the new, the very new part back there and then the the old part, you know, by the offices.
I have two contractors right now uh, getting uh, some pricing on it uh, just from other projects out there. Um, I'm estimating it's probably gonna be about a hundred fifty thousand dollar project um, because there's four things we have to do. Not just the AC, uh, so we have the AC along with the filtration and the sanitization of the air. Um, not to the degree of like a hospital, but we need to make sure that we're sanitizing that air so we're not passing around, you know, often, you know, things. Um, our electrical panel out there is maxed, uh, so we're up to increase the service or drop another line uh, to the shelter. And then we're also gonna have to do something with the buildings, what I'm calling like retrofitting the buildings, uh, increasing the R factor to hold the conditioned air because they're not they're not engineered right now to hold the conditioned air. Uh, like we have open ridge vents, things out there which we have to, you know, close that stuff off to be able to hold the conditioned air. Uh, so those are the the bigger parts of it. That's why I'm thinking it's gonna be be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project altogether. So.
That would essentially happen next year, correct?
Uh, Mayor and I have been talking about it. Um, so what we're trying to do is do half this year and half next year. Uh, that's why that seventy five thousand is in there under the capital projects for next year.
So look, we'll look at it. If that work gets done and uh, but it is looking pretty good, we'll, we'll try to squeeze some more out. We're just.
You're referring to twenty six and twenty seven?
Yep.
Definitely with that, okay.
Twenty five, twenty six.
Shell raises another, what's she need, another seventy two thousand?
Ran the projections on the twenty five budget throughout the end of the year. Uh, we are sitting uh, well, I mean, we've been really watching it to hopefully put money towards this. Um, I would hope that I can pay for the vast majority of it out of the twenty five budget to where a little less than per twenty six budget. Waiting on getting those final prices, um, and hopefully before the end of the year, we'll be able to present a contract to you all um, to get it started this year.
It's a pretty hot topic.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely working on it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Make make motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Have a motion. You have a second? Thank you. We're adjourned.